Able to house them within our community. Instead of driving them to Newfield, dry and rotten. And they can't afford to come to town because the bus system doesn't run effectively enough to get them to work here.
I know what you're saying, but um under New York state law. This is a long time ago. Impact these were ruled unconstitutional.
But we can change. Just because New York says said we can, but we can say you can pay us rather than.
But Jamie, we're gonna, we're gonna stop because now we're actually here for public.
Thank you for your patience.
We gotta get to the business.
Sorry.
Thanks, everybody. I'd like to, I think we all agree on the same problem. Which is a great combination. You know?
Yeah, no, no. That's a hard problem.
And I don't feel anything but carrying sincerity here. So I just appreciate that. We have this opportunity that people made time and we're seeing this together.
October sixth, ten one. October sixth.
Yes, sure.
Don't you have a vote before then? September ninety?
That's a committee meeting, the housing committee.
That's housing.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for your patience. Sorry about that. And today we are here to discuss a BVW five I think the property owner formerly known as BBSH in McKinley Ithaca. I am Kelly Bowden, the administrative director for Tompkins County Industrial Development Agency, the IDA. I will conduct today's public hearing and record the minutes of the hearing. IDA board members present are Jerry Deets and Chair Rich John. This hearing is being held pursuant to a public notice published in accordance with Article eighteen A of the General Municipal Law in the Ithaca Journal on Friday, August twenty second, two thousand twenty five. The purpose of this hearing is to afford the public with an opportunity to make statements and comments on the request by BVW five, the property owner LLC project for financial assistance from the Tompkins County IDA. The project consists of the redesign and redevelopment of property located at four oh one East State Street in Ithaca, New York. This will include the construction of a new six to seven story building with approximately three hundred and seventy two residential apartments, a parking garage with approximately two hundred and thirty eight spaces, roughly seventy five hundred square feet of shared space such as outdoor courtyards, seating areas and other related features and improvements to the site. The financial assistance contemplated by the IDA with this modification will consist generally of an increase in the exemption from local in-state sales and use tax from the previously approved four million four hundred and forty three thousand nine hundred and seventy one dollars to uh five million six hundred thousand dollars. Comments presented at this hearing will be taken into consideration by the Tompkins County IDA as part of its consideration of the application. The hearing will remain open until all submitted comments and members of the public who are present at the hearing have been given an opportunity to make statements or comments on the application. If you wish to speak at the hearing, please sign the speakers list. Speakers will have three minutes to provide comment. I will ask each speaker to sit at the table so the microphone can pick up the sound. Please state your name and address. If you are appearing as a representative of an organization or governmental entity, please identify the organization or entity and state its address. If you wish to submit a comment of your, a copy of your comments for the record, you may hand them to me. And finally, I'd like to remind you that the purpose of this hearing is to afford you an opportunity to make comments about the request for financial incentives from the IDA. This is not a question and answer section. I have two comments that were submitted via email. I will read those first and then we will go to speakers. The first comes from Sean Galbraith. Dear Kelly, I object to further tax breaks for developers. Specifically, I refer to the Dean Building Request. Which I think you may have gotten that. The out-of-state developer worth billions does not need a tax break. The overgrowth of large apartment complexes that get tax breaks and then are either badly managed, Astari and INHS, or do not offer affordable housing, wealthy or subsidized student targeted, is overdeveloping Ithaca and costing us needed tax stuff. The ill-fated library place is another poorly thought-out attempt to make wealthy developers their turf. In this very uncertain times, I object to further tax breaks. Sean Galbraith.
Someone speak. You must speak.
The second message comes from Don Barber. I ask you to share these comments with members of the IDA Board. I am writing about the proposed sales tax exemption for the project at four oh one East State Street. This is not a comment about the project per se. Rather, a comment about the application for temporary sales tax exemption. I ask the Ithaca Development Agency Board to give serious consideration to the changing public sector funding landscape. With the reduced federal revenue, public sector funding is becoming tighter by the moment. I want to advise the Ithaca Development Agency Board to give serious consideration in serving and protecting all revenue streams for local government. The impacts of the federal government's shutting off of revenue sharing federal dollars to state and federal support of public sector service providers are putting tremendous pressure on state funds. The state is responding by shifting public sector costs down to local governments. So local governments like Tompkins County and its towns need every bit of revenue to maintain or minimize austerity to the services they provide. The austerity impacts of the federal government are also impacting our citizens with social safety net services in addition to many other county and city-run programs. Reducing sales tax revenue leads to a need for increased property tax revenue, the most regressive form of taxation. This is the time to go back to the applicant and ask them to dig deeper and make this project work without the sales tax break. Sincerely, Don Barber, former Town of Caroline Supervisor and member of TCAD. So our first speaker on the list is Amanda Kirchfessner, forty-four seventy-one Jacksonville Road, Truansburg. And we do have speakers along the middle of the, our microphones along the middle.
So you can hear me. My name's Amanda. I'm here today to speak against increasing the tax abatement on the project for you. The definition of insanity is trying the same thing repeatedly and expecting different results. We're constantly expanding the housing supply. We have a massive project developing on the South Hill as it stands. I do not feel that we are adequately looking at the long-term consequences. We are constantly having to repair infrastructure which likely has to do with increased demand. People are like, oh, it passes off to the ratepayers. If these apartments aren't fully occupied, the ratepayers and the apartments aren't helping to offset the cost for local people. That's one thing. I don't know that we look closely enough at the long-term consequences of driving pylons into the earth everywhere around downtown and its impacts on the infrastructure underneath the grounds. But I do think that we need to look more closely at those costs. Also, I had the pleasure of talking to a worker on the project before you. He was from Oklahoma and not to deny him a right to earn a decent living. When I spoke to Todd Brewer about whether or not we had workers locally who could do the job, Todd said absolutely, they are all dying to work right now. So the fact that we keep extending these abatements to developers who realize that not even workers from New York state, but workers from other states, he didn't need to think about his long-term costs. Maybe one thing that this was providing for households here in Tompkins County or surrounding. But it's not. I mean, sure, this worker's staying in a Tompkins County hotel and I guess we're getting a little hotel tax off the guy and he's buying meals out. Maybe there's a little sales tax revenue. But I'd much rather see that in the pockets of somebody who lives here. If they've got money, it would be coming back to us year-round. Yeah, I'm just asking you to ask what if, like what if we didn't give them this? Let's see what happens. Because this will really give us an example of what the market will there. Will developers develop when the incentive isn't as sweet as they can make it? I mean, they would be stupid not to ask for one point three million dollars. But I think we would be stupid to keep giving them the money. Even though it's not giving them money, but it's money they don't have to pay. Uh, we would be stupid not to try on a project of this size because they do have the capacity to make it smaller. They do have contingencies they haven't looked at to make it more economically viable for their fans. And what would happen if we said no this time? What I encourage you to, to consider that possibility strongly making this decision. Thank you.
Next is Peter Wissaker, seven oh five North Tioga Street, Ithaca.
I'm Peter Wissaker, seven oh five North Tioga Street. Good morning. When this project was first given the green light by a narrow vote in two thousand twenty-one, then IDA member Laura Lewis called it one of the most difficult votes she'd ever taken. Why? Because a company with assets under management roughly equal to the budget of the city of Ithaca was coming at the height of COVID to ask us to give them a break. Eighteen point six million dollars at the time, fifteen point six percent of the cost of a project. Given that the property tax abatement isn't capped, we actually have no idea how large that abatement will be at this point. The cost of the building has certainly risen. But that eighteen point six million, a little less than two point seven million was for an abatement of sales cap. Well, originally, they came back with an amended application which asked for nearly three point seven million. The community said yes, and in two thousand twenty-three, they came back again. Four point four million, okay? Sure, now they're back again asking for another one point three million dollars. And it is time to say no. Blue Vista and Peak May clearly aren't having any problem financing the project since according to the letter in last month's IDA agenda package, they're now financing seventy percent of the project instead of sixty percent and caused to come up significantly, voted it good. Do we need that? Do we need that money over the next few years? Remember, it's sales tax we're talking about, and the answer is yes, very much so. They have ninety properties and at sixty-month colleges and about three point eight billion dollars invested in student housing. Again, student housing is Blue Vista and Peak May's specialty. And clearly, they think it's profitable enough to continue growing even in an era of high interest rates. Last December, they bought four buildings with a total of nearly three thousand student beds. In other words, they can easily afford the one point three million dollars. If they couldn't, they've had every opportunity to shrink the project to what they can afford but have chosen not to. Our taxpayers shouldn't further subsidize their ambitions. We've already committed to giving them enough. Please vote no next week. Finally, the board should ask the administrator to provide an updated estimate of what the property tax abatement is likely to be before voting on their request. There was no budget or revaluation in the package you received last month. Just the request from Blue Vista and Peak May. As responsible decision makers, you should have this information. It provides an important context for your vote. And one more small point is that I think you guys should return to the discussion of creating a broader network to publicize public hearings, which is something that's been talked about.
I'm going to give the sign-in sheet to the people who came in late. If you could, if you would wish to speak, you could put your name, address, and if you're within organizations. Next, Marty Keller, one ten West Lewis Street in Ithaca.
I feel like I don't have a lot of detailed information about this specific project, but I have for many years felt as if the IDA was operating kind of as a rubber stamp to developer classes. I do think that this organization needs to be thinking seriously about each project and making a decision based on the individual merits and not just saying yes every time a developer asks. And I'm here to observe and maybe get a little better sense of how this works. I had a lot of concerns about the city of Ithaca's development policies and what the long-term impacts on the city are going to be of building so much high-end housing at the expense of housing for working people. Um, I'm inclined to really agree with Don Barber's comments about the economic situation we're in right now and what are our priorities for that money if we don't give it to the developers? Because I kind of feel like the developers already have a lot of money. There's an awful lot of people in the city who don't and you need services from the city. But the city is having hard time providing because of the other crunches that we've been up for recently. That's it for now.
My next, Alita Wood, pastor, with St. Paul's.
Uh, so I live at two oh eight East Port Street here in Ithaca, um, and I just recently got here. Uh, but I know that I am blessed to live in the city of Ithaca because the church bought this property ages ago. I think like well over a hundred years ago. There's no way the church could pay me enough. They don't have the money to pay me enough to live in Ithaca if they didn't have this house from a hundred years ago. So the housing is very expensive and I can see how working class folks are not able to afford living in the city.
Uh, next, I'm.
Nice to see you.
Uh, Jamaica Fredla, um, Greedlove, Tim.
My name is Jamie Greedla. My given name is Jamaica, just like the island. So I live in, uh, at Two Nolan Drive in Freeville, New York, and the town which is up the hill between, uh, between here and, and Dryden. I've been a Tompkins County resident for over twenty years now. I'm a person of faith and someone who spent my lifetime advocating for all people. Uh, Jerry and I worked on several things around town, particularly with our homeless friends and and I count it a privilege that to be a part of this community, to be able to work for St. Paul's, to be able to be here. And I join my voice for, with all of the comments that have already been very good in support and asking that we take a stand and take a risk and see what we can do to change the model so that all people can have a place to live in our town. That could invest in our community here without having to take it so far out that we can't really be connected. Out-of-state billionaires, uh, giving out of state billionaires more tax breaks and allowing them to use non-union labor, which I have been blessed to be part of union for the last twenty-something years to build bigger, more expensive housing in Ithaca is just not okay. And we have already been given notice that the county will face budget deficits over, over and above, um, back in two thousand and nine, I was an employee for the Tompkins County when we had the, when we almost lost our jobs at that point and managed to keep them. It's also part of the WIC program when we stood to say we, we cannot not have a job in this county. And we were able to do that by public opinion and by public, uh, interest. And so I commend you for having public options for people to come and say how they feel. And I asked that you would also have them on evenings and weekends so that people would have a chance that are working and will find they'll do that. So since we have this budget deficit going forward, we would, um, and we know that, I agree with Amanda, that we, we can see the problem that we're having with huge trucks and things like that coming over our, over our roads and tearing things down. But meanwhile, we're granting cart launch. Workers in the middle class are priced out of any place to live, forcing us more into poverty. I am concerned, um, lest right now I have a home of my own that I can afford because I paid it off and just have to pay my taxes and everything else that goes along with it. But as we all age, where are we going to go? We cannot, I sit on the board of McGrath House, they have five hundred people on their waiting list and they aren't. We have no senior housing and a lot of the people that we worked with over in Toad Blue are over sixty-five and that's really distressing for us. We just had a, uh, there, just on TV two days ago, there was a, uh, a, um, there was a news article about the fact of how many people at over sixty-five were finding themselves homeless. We've shut out that. So thank you. We know, we care. Let's join together and do this together.
Next, Shavon Smith, P.O. Box eighty-five.
Okay. I like to have something more written up or something. What do I say? Oh, this is hard. All right. I'm gonna first of all, address the elephant in the room because you're all staring at me. Yes, I'm sorry. Um, Shavon Smith, I use P.O. Box eighty-five because I'm out in Barnum. I've already been pushed out from downtown. For many reasons, affordability is one of them. Safety is another. I am a single mom, um, who went through breast cancer last year and I was right downtown, perfect location, right by the school. And an incident happened that pushed me, scared me to death and pushed me out. And that was that. Accountability needs to be had, not just here with you all, but with the developers, okay? When someone brings you a project and they lay out, this is what it is, this is what it is. And when we start doubling back and redesigning things, we're missing stuff. Because you already had a plan and this was what the plan looked like. So I, I'm and we're talking about millions of dollars. We're not talking about pennies here. We're talking about, you know, life-changing money for people, many people. Um, and as I stumble along these broken-down sidewalks and my car falls into potholes, I'm trying to understand what is Tompkins County's priority? Because it can't be us people, we the people. So by the way, I'm people versus power on Facebook. That's what I should always say. We gotta prioritize our community way more than we are, okay? This is, it, it, all of these issues affect every single class, okay? It doesn't matter who you are. It doesn't matter if you're a homeowner or a renter. If you're disabled or abled, if you're employed or unemployed, none of this matters. We are all one body. And all of these decisions affect all of these bodies. But they're, they're not taken into account. I'm sitting in a room and honestly, I gotta tell you, this is, it's blowing my mind a lot to see the lack of diversity in all of these rooms. It's actually frightening. Because I need to know who in here is speaking for me. And I don't see that ever. Like ever. And that scares the shit out of me. Because I feel it. So I, it's present right here. It's present in every room I go into. Not one of you has any. Who has ever been homeless? Because I'm one stick from it. I'm a voucher from it. Who has lived on the street and had nothing? And until you've been there, you have no idea what you're talking about. A million dollars is a million dollars and that's a lot of freaking money. And I could do amazing things with a million dollars. Amazing. Why can't you all?
Thank you, Shabon. That's your time. Next, you have Vivian Milton.
I wrote your name down because we came together, she asked. I can put her name down.
Caleb Harnett of one forty-six Cotton Road. Please come to the table.
Thank you. My name is Caleb Harnett. Uh, I'm a longtime Ithaca resident. I've been here for thirty years, born and raised. Uh, currently live at one forty-six Cottington Road. I just want to say thank you very much for taking the time to see us all here today. Really appreciate that. Um, this is my first time at one of these kind of council meetings and I was invited by Nutmeg over here. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and I really liked what you had to say. As somebody who's been paying taxes and struggling to pay my rent and watching my mom contend with taxes on her house that is paid off. You know, fortunately, my dad got that started a long time ago here. Listening to the way that money is spent and it comes and it goes. It's really important to consider the people who support this entire economy. Without us, there is nothing here, without the schools coming and people and going, okay, maybe it'd be a little different, but without the people who live here, who have been here, who have heritage, legacy here, I suppose you could say. There wouldn't be anything here. It'd be like grassy fields. So thinking about those people first, instead of developing for people who are not here, who will not be here, who won't stay here, who don't live here, who won't work here in a year or two, when the development is done. I think it's important to consider those people before you assign another million dollars somewhere. It has no purpose being. I think there are, as was mentioned before, millions of dollars in circulation already. So asking for a bigger budget increase, just, just a bigger budget increase seems kind of like just prodding to see how far one can go. And without a, no, eventually, there will never be a smaller budget. There will never be more money for people in the community who may not be able to access it. So I think starting now is better than never. And I really appreciate you taking the time to think about that. Thank you.
I am Meg Doherty, one ten Union Street, Ithaca. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came to this public hearing. Um, to the board, I'd make a request. I made it my personal mission to talk to either at least four hundred people since the last meeting to try and represent all the people who can't come to a Wednesday morning meeting. They all expressed the need for a change in that. But most of them honestly work two jobs, but something to move at least some representation at open night or weekend so they can actually come and participate in this. I'm a twenty-year resident of Ithaca. I am trying to say this concisely. I see a separation. I see a separate world thing happening in Ithaca and it continues to grow inversion. I don't like to say have and have nots. I don't think there's any evil demon. I think there's just two separate ways that people are able to be and they're getting more separate. And so, and everyone is busy. So I heard a lot from working-class people that their morale is so low, I cannot even describe. Um, I lived here in the nineties and it's like they live in a war zone. I, a former preschool teacher friend of mine is struggling just to stay here and it's, she's eating at rooms and fishes. I'm welcome to take time outside of this. Please to come meet with me and meet some of these people. I have disabled friends who are property owners that are parents. But I'd like to just say personally, I've lived this separation. I've lived in Philadelphia and got pushed out of my neighborhood. I lived in Boulder, Colorado and got pushed out of that community. I lived in Oregon and Seattle and California and I got pushed out of those communities. And I helped build those communities to help families. I had it happen in Hawaii. So I just want to try and translate what these wonderful, beautiful, hard-working, hardened-sold warriors for Ithaca's better future have told me. And they just don't think you're fighting for them. They don't have a choice when they say I can't pay my property tax. There's no process. They don't. And so in their mind, this is a small one. They just would like to see some acknowledgement that they're being heard in their desperation by community leaders and representatives. They, they feel things are very unfair. And I, I, I can't really argue. You know, when you have a library that's got amazing programs and you supported it and now you can't even drive in to where that library is. It changes people's lives radically. So they're now in rural areas and their kids can't walk to the library or the park. So I'm trying to describe a lot of the things that are real and some of them are business people and they're like, well, why don't they just push back? Why don't you push back on 1.3 million dollars right now? We'd like to see you do that.
Uh, did you want to speak?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure about all of this, um, but I'd like to speak as a resident.
Can you put your name on the screen? Three minutes. Yeah, three minutes to make it.
So I'm Barb Price and I have lived in the Ithaca area for thirty-five years, um. I've raised my great-grandkids, I can, I raised my great-grandkids and my, my grandchildren, my great-grandkids. And I depend on all the subsidies. And when I see things going away, that's a hard. We have food pantries now that help so much that there is, and there's not times when I maybe wouldn't eat, but it definitely made it so that I could make ends meet and, and maybe go for somebody else, you know, some other family. But I watched my granddaughter's family struggle with mental illness and other things. I should not, I'm not a public screamer because I get too emotional, but. And I appreciate everything that everybody does and that because it's hard to listen to people come and say, why don't you do more? You know, why don't you do this? And, and I've been on other sides of things, but I'm real. I'm real. And what my family needs is real, yeah. And what my grandchildren and their grandchildren need or is real. And we need people to fight for us. To, to remember that those people, like all of us, and that, you know, we're represented in varying ways, but um, so although I appreciate everything that is being done, I know we need more. And that's so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if that helps, if you see a different picture and what, what the monies, you know, can do to help and that, but everything that you do that helps. It just branches out to everyone. And that, and not the trickle-down effect, but just a trickle.
Thank you.
Uh, Kay Sotomayor, um.
Yes, so I'm an educator for ICSD, um, representing the bottom of the food chain, um, with substitute teachers for the district. I'm a career substitute consulting educator. I've been doing this, um, in two different states for ten years and eight different school districts. I believe I'm an employee with eight, excuse me, with five different districts and ICSD is one of them. I do not live in Tompkins County, but part of my heart is in Tompkins County. Not by necessity, well, it is by necessity. I cannot afford to live in this county. I'm a person of faith in my grandmother, which is the home that I live in. I am not being paid a living wage and a lot of us are not. And, um, um, we people are very well-educated and very well-diverse at loads and fishes. So I call it the soup kitchen. And people say, you go there to volunteer. I go there to advocate. And I go there to be able to eat. Because I can't afford the bill, um, to be able to buy groceries. Go to this food pantry to be able to have a place to eat. I advocate for my families, which Barb is one of them. Um, in her great-grandchildren are my students. I advocate for other families of single mothers that have eight children and are working minimum wage jobs. I will see a single. My advocacy work is done out of my own pocket. But I believe that the time has come when the people's voices will be heard and change will happen. I deem myself as hope dealer. Thank you.
The time is now ten fifty AM. This hearing has been held open since ten, ten AM? To allow for public comment on the application. Before we close the hearing, is there anyone else here who would like to make a statement regarding the application?
Well, she's our future general manager.
The time is now ten fifty. This hearing is now concluded. I thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, can I ask a favor? If I put my hat on as a member of the county legislature, different topic, but this is the audience I'd really like to talk to. For the last, well, I'm wrapping up ten years on the legislature. I chose not to run again, but in that time, one issue I have worked on over and over again, and Jerry and I have been dragged through this, is trying to do something about the encampments in the city. And we have a moment of opportunity. I don't know if any of you have read about the navigation of the city is doing or trying to do, and that we're putting together Code Blue for this season and each year, but the idea is to put them together and to do enhanced services in one location that can really focus on helping these people. And at the same time, providing additional services into a designated encampment area with water, um, with nearby bathrooms, showers, laundry. It's a real opportunity to do something different and perhaps better, I think better. Um, but everything about it is hard and it requires the city and the county to work together. Um, we have talked about this for the last decade I've been on the legislature and we have not done this. We've failed.